Ms. Kelly, are we ready?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 10th, 2021 special meeting of the Math Acton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, we have all board members present except for Ms. Reese. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, there's one guest and scheduled speaker. That's myself. I'm going to make my way to the podium and ask that the board members if they would be so kind to either follow along with the presentation either at your table or on the computer, or you're welcome to sit in the first row of seats. Good evening. And just so we can set the stage for this evening, I am removing my mask. And we created a barrier here which I was able to crawl over in order to keep it safe for those who have masks and want to remove their masks so that they can be better heard when speaking at the microphone this evening. So with that said, this evening, the board will consider making the proposed modifications to the health and safety plan that was just approved just a few weeks ago. The two modifications include a change from optional masking for adults and students to universal requirement for masking of all persons K through 12. The second modification simply changes the starting point with which we begin the mitigation strategy outlined in the approved plan where six feet distancing will occur at tables for lunch on day one of school as compared to the implementation of that strategy following two consecutive weeks of substantial community transmission. Following this presentation, I will take questions from the board. While questions can be on any health and safety matter outlined in the plan, this presentation focuses on universal masking as the primary change to the already approved plan. The presentation touches on the following listed matters: time of events, medical experts, Delta variant data, Montgomery County Office of Public Health requirements, and lastly, providing the optimal in-person instruction. Since April of 2021, we, superintendents of Montgomery County, have been hearing from the county and CHOP that it is more than likely that we will be able to plan for a start of the school year without requiring masks. This was my general understanding then, and it was the same understanding shared among members of the district's pandemic team, some of which also are in regular contact with the county Department of Public Health. The proposal for optional masking was, nearly a month ago, thought to be the most appropriate and most favorable path for a school start. As this timeline outlines, the optional masking plan was presented in the work session of the board on July 22nd. At that time, there were no indications of concern. On July 27th, at approximately 3:00 PM that afternoon, just four hours prior to the Board of School Directors' scheduled vote on the health and safety plan that included optional masking, the CDC revised their masking recommendations, recommending that all persons in schools, regardless of vaccination status, wear masks indoors. Then, on July 29th of 2021, the Montgomery County Department of Public Health revised their masking recommendations, and it appears on this slide before you. And it reads, "In alignment with the CDC, the Montgomery County Office of Public Health recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to schools regardless of vaccination status or school district level of community transmission." As you can imagine, these changes, so close to the start of the school year, make everything much more challenging. So when you look into the why of the medical expert recommendations, you begin to understand that these agencies are really addressing the Delta variant with these proposed recommendations. That makes vaccinated and non-vaccinated individuals susceptible, and where the experts have concluded that masking and distancing in schools is still the most appropriate mitigation strategy. Listed on the slide before you are four bullet points, just some of those that were listed on the CDC recommendations back on the 27th of July. And they read as follows: Delta is causing some vaccine breakthrough infections, meaning infections in fully vaccinated people than other strains have; the Delta spreads more than twice as easily from one person to another compared with earlier strains; Delta has most recently surged to become the predominant variant from 1% in May to over 80% of cases in July; and the last one, people infected with the Delta have higher viral loads, meaning more virus in their body than the previous variants. So this is not a matter of, in my interpretation of this, is not a matter of vaccinated persons versus non-vaccinated persons. It is the recommendation of the CDC and Montgomery County Department of Health that all people masking and distancing will help not only protect themselves, but protect those around them. In terms of recent community transmission data, the district, the county, and the state have already reached the moderate level of community transmission. But certainly, these numbers aren't anywhere close to the numbers that we experienced last year, but the trend is pointing north. While there are arguments for and against masking, the pressing matter this evening for the board is to consider the impact that contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine protocols established by the county Department of Public Health have on the continuity of our educational program. Our nurses are required to follow the county's contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine protocols. In doing so, students that do not meet both of these criteria, meaning three feet or greater and masked, will not be in school for seven to 10 days if part of the contact tracing process. So as an example, as is listed on the screen, if both the COVID-19 positive student and an unvaccinated student who is exposed, were both wearing masks and practicing physical distancing of at least three feet or more, the exposed student will not be identified as a close contact and will not need to quarantine. And the next part of that sentence should be, "and will not miss school in person." So I want to make it clear that I'm not stating that we are here this evening because there's a requirement by the CDC or by the Montgomery County Department of Health to mask our students, staff, or visitors. I am telling you that the CDC and the Montgomery County Department of Health, two of the four medical entities that we follow, have clearly stated that they recommend universal masking in schools as a primary mitigation strategy. In addition, I am telling you that we need to follow the county contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine protocols. The protocol requires that we have students three feet or greater distance and masked. And if we do this, we can limit the disruption to the student, to the classroom, and to the building. So this evening, for your approval, you have the original plan modified to require universal masking K through 12 beginning August 16th of 2021, along with the other associated modifications that will best meet the goal of this board to provide a consistent in-person instructional program for all students. I'm going to take my seat at the table and take questions then from the board. Are there any questions from members of the board? Mr. McGuinness?
I know it's a little early in the process because of the schedule of school boards in Montgomery County. Has any current Montgomery County school defied the Montgomery County Board of Health's decree that we're reading here today and decided to go maskless? And if you don't have that answer, I'm okay with getting back to me.
Yeah, I don't.
Right now, there's no, oh, this school and that school. But it seems to me that you look at New Jersey, you look at Delaware, and I guess they're different states. I get it. But you look at Norristown, you look at, we're all kind of dealing with this newness of this data. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Drew, I believe Boyer Town voted against it.
Thank you.
And I was going to say, I know several school districts around us are starting to look at it. Most of them have meetings scheduled or haven't had their meetings to update their current health and safety plans. But based on what I'm seeing, a lot of them are coming around and really looking at that issue of masking and updating their health and safety plan, just in reference to the masking policy.
Questions?
Last year, do you have statistics on how much absenteeism there was with contact tracing and the protocols we have in place?
Yeah, we had about 1,804 individuals that were on the list for contact tracing last year, beginning in November, roughly around November 2nd, when we started coming back in a modified hybrid environment through the end of that school year. That includes students and adults. Ms. Kang Crowe?
So we talk about recommendations versus mandate. At any point in any of these conversations with Montgomery County, did they give the rationale of why they are not mandating it? Why are they not mandating it and keeping it as a recommendation? Do they have any discussion with you on this?
We've, as superintendents of the county, had explained to them that recommendations don't help. It creates challenges within our own communities, and then it creates challenges across communities. So for example, we might have neighboring school districts that are having this same type of conversation, they could end up voting differently based on recommendations. So we had those conversations with the county, but they are not, just like the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and apparently no one else has taken the leadership role to say, "This should be done or shouldn't be done." And therefore, it's left up to all of us. I happen to be the only doctor here in the group, but not of that kind. And I've thrown a little bit of humor in there because my family usually pokes fun at all of that. But nonetheless, I want you to be aware that, you know, it's left up to people who unfortunately aren't in the best position to, you know, make it on a scientific basis. Whereas, the reason I'm sharing what I shared with you this evening is not so much that we do this on the basis of health, which certainly is a primary matter, but the operation of the school and to keep it with the consistency of what you, as a board, have determined to be the most appropriate form of education, which is in person. And this is my recommendation to say, "This is how I can deliver it the most consistent manner for this coming school year." Until such time, these county protocols are either lifted or expanded or somehow softened. But until that time, I can tell, I'm going to have to operate school one way or another. So we're going in person. And I'm going to either deal with having all the extra nurses from the outside agencies to support our in-school nurses because of all the contact tracing that will be required. And we can do that. We will operate, and we will operate well. And but we will be spending a lot of time doing that. And you will then possibly see, you know, a significant number of students at home. And please know that on the one slide, and I'm just going to point back up to the screen, we are not doing what we did last year. So last year, we had a hybrid environment, and if a child had a quarantine, because we had streaming into the classroom, we were able to, at the moment's notice, have that kid in, or that child into the classroom with the instruction. We are not doing that this year. And so what happens is, a child will have from seven to 10 days of work sent home via either a traditional method, like if we had Pink Eye or some other type of, you know, matter that required a child to stay home for an extended period of time, or we will be sending it through the Google Classroom. But we will not be zooming the child in, we will not be zooming home to the child. And where there are special circumstances, you know, the counselor and the principal and the teacher will work to make whatever modifications are necessary for specific cases. But for the majority of students, they will be absent between seven and 10 days with work being sent home. But it won't be the same as we did last year. And I just want to make sure that the board understands that because I think it's different than last year. Because I think people were accepting of, "So I'm home quarantined, I'm home for seven days, I'll just zoom in, it'll be fine." I may have went a little longer than you expected, so I can't remember exactly what the question was.
I have several questions, so we could all bounce around and answer. You're doing fine. Thank you.
I just wanted to talk about that just because I think it's important to have that point clarified. I brought it up at education meeting last week. Looking at seven to 10 days for one kid in a family, and I'm just wondering if you can go into detail about, just because we know the nature of COVID and how it runs through maybe families where one kid may recover, another kid may test positive, I'm just wondering what the plans are for if a family is impacted? Just because the length of time may be more than 10 days per family?
Well, certainly, it can be more than 10 days for a family. It can be more than 10 days for even an individual. So, you know, our nurses, just like we did last year, are in direct contact with the families. Our teachers and our principals have all, and our counselors have all worked to make sure that whatever modifications and whatever supports we can provide, if there are extended and extended circumstances associated with it, you know, we'll provide those supports. But I'm giving you a generalization on the screen about what it's likely to take because that is in the exclusion document for Montgomery County Department of Public Health. It still references the seven to 10 days. And in our plan, and I'll just make it clear in our plan, while in our plan, it talks about tests to stay, right now, the county isn't supporting tests to stay. So until they get, till CHOP and the county figure that process out, there's not a mechanism for me to, you know, just test students or adults. And if they test, you know, negative, they can stay, you know, as part of that screening process.
So I have two questions. One is, when you're dealing with students that require special accommodations, it doesn't have to just be IEPs, 504s, those students that just cannot manage this mask, I know we have the physicians exemptions, but what can we do? Those kids that need to work on articulation, see how the teacher's reading things, understanding what's being said. Personally, I can't hear in one ear. I can't see your face, so it's very hard for me to understand things when we're not on a microphone. So there's so much to learn without the mask. There's the shields, there's other things. And we look at universal masking, there's no other options. We're talking about just this. And our kids have suffered quite a bit. What is the modifications? What is the, what are we going to do? Why would we put our kids behind this when they've fallen, so many children have fallen behind with it? That's my one point of it, you know? My, and that's where like my concerns are, and that's really where it lies, is that I think it should be choice. I think there's so many students that have had difficulties. Parent choice, it is a recommendation, not a mandate. And so I feel like, you know, I am going to ask if we could please keep it down so that we can have discussion up here. Thank you. So I understand that. So I'm just expressing this, like, and I know this is a question and answer. So I want us to, how are we going to work with the children? They do not need IEPs, 504s, SAP plans, the kids that generally just can't do this mask. What are we going to do? And on top of it, what discipline are we going to put in place to enforce it? Because we're going to be challenged by those.
So I think there's, to answer, to respond to two of your questions. The first one, you know, we dealt almost a whole school year with masking as challenges, and our teachers, our guidance counselors, our nurses, they made, you know, enormous, met enormous challenges with, you know, appropriate modifications. Do I know what the exact modifications? I don't deal directly with students, so I don't know, you know, specifically what we would do. Certainly, you know, the challenge is masking refers to mask, it doesn't refer to shield. And we learned that the hard way, you know, back almost a year ago, when we were sitting here having that same conversation. So, you know, there are things that we've done, our students have, for the most part, I can't say every child, but for the most part, have been successful with, within this, you know, with wearing the mask. So we make, we make.
Okay, there can't be calling out. We will adjourn the meeting if that starts happening. I'm telling you right now, it's got to stop.
So that's one aspect. So can we make accommodations? Can we address? We will do the very best that we can to make those adjustments. And the second question is, I think it was in terms of discipline. And so, you know, certainly, we will be challenged with something as controversial as this for the longest time. The problem is, you know, if this board adopts a universal masking policy, that becomes the rule. And the rule then is enforced through the code of conduct. And the code of conduct has a set of level of matters that you would go through. Now, certainly, we wouldn't want to, you know, have to deal and give children suspensions for not wearing masks. Our first option is to have, like we did this past school year, we will have masks at the door. We will have masks on the bus. We will provide them a mask. And we will provide them as many masks as they need if they happen to, you know, tear one, rip one. But the good news is that our children, you know, from K through 12 have been very compliant with during this, you know, challenging time. And while certainly someone could challenge us, they challenge us on dress code on a regular basis, you know, not wearing, you know, wearing something that has, something that's inappropriate on their shirt or something of that nature. We deal with those things on a daily basis. So are we prepared to do that? We prefer not to have to do that, but we have the proper pieces in place to manage that.
And my last, one of my last, I apologize. My other thing, and I had requested for guidance council because, as we all know, the PA Senate met, and, you know, there was definitely a lot of questioning of what rights do we have as a school board to implement masking by mandating masking? What right do we have? And will we be in really some legal issues going forward? So if you could speak on that, you know, with that, I think it's important because I do believe what the PA Senate did say. That's just where I stand. I do think I'm very concerned by mandating something that wasn't mandated by the health professionals puts us in risk, high risk.
I think Ms. Kang Crowe, and, you know, it's true that, you know, we could be sued for anything. And I'm not suggesting that someone couldn't make a claim against us. So to put that aside, the authority rests in the school code whereby you, as a board, have that authority to provide the set of rules and structure for a school system. It's in your authority to do that. And if masking, just like uniforms, just like, just like a number of other rules that you have put into place, you have that authority. So, you know, not speaking in a legalese term, but having the conversation specifically with our solicitor, and even getting other input from the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Solicitor on the authority question that you're asking, it is clear to me, and it should be clear to you in the memo that we had sent out, that we do have that authority, and you do have that authority if you so choose to exercise it here this evening.
Okay. I think Dr. Zerby did a really good job of summarizing the core issue here is continuous education for as many students as possible. It's not about, in my opinion, not about personal choice or parents' rights or any of those other things, it's about the disruption of education for our students for this school year. We have a recommendation that has clearly said that three to seven feet and also providing masking, well-fitting masking, I think it was their official words, reducing the numbers of students that will need to quarantine. To me, that is why we're voting here today. It's not a broader issue than that. It's about delivering the education of the fact to students as much as possible. Obviously, I'm not a doctor or expert in any of the medical aspects, but the belief is, my belief, the conclusion I've come to, this will keep as many students in the school and learning in school, which has been the only thing that we've agreed about in the community for the last year. So I think, Dr. Zerby, if you could just, you mentioned the dual mode, there were some additional things that maybe are not necessarily clear to the rest of the community, or they haven't necessarily read it. But the students with additional needs, Jen, just address that. You've mentioned briefly buses, but if you can mention buses, lunches, recess, gym, sports, other areas that may have different views of how we would handle it.
Yes, certainly. In the health. In the health and safety plan, as it was originally adopted, we addressed all those areas. We addressed recess, phys ed, and when we were doing any of those activities outdoors, we will not be masking or requiring the masking. It will be mask optional for students and adults to wear a mask outside. For indoor athletic events, for indoor phys ed, you know, masking will be part of that those activities. I can't remember any of the other items, sorry. Yes, so this is an indoor-only requirement as part of the recommendations, and the outdoor requirement, there is no outdoor requirement, other than that's optional.
And there was a change to the lunches?
So lunches, as I mentioned earlier, and I didn't want to focus too much on this because it's already spelled out in the approved plan, but instead of waiting to the substantial phase where we would migrate from six, basically it's six or a little more than three feet, close to the four feet at table, to six feet at a table where we would have four people, we're moving right from the start of the school year so that at the beginning of the school year, we're going to be three feet or greater with mask if approved. And we will have a six-feet distance for the lunch, at lunch for the tables. So principals originally planned to be able to manage both a regular lunch schedule slash configuration, and also the alternate one if we hit the substantial phase. We're just moving right to the substantial phase because if we can head that off from the beginning, that again lessens the amount of contact tracing and quarantine required. So then the only matter that we have to deal with with the distancing is anything that's over 15 minutes on the bus.
Okay, so the last thing I'd ask you to do, Dr. Zerby, is if this green part that you have up here does not include the universal masking, and the individual student is exposed, how would that work with the number of students that would possibly have to be quarantined? So if I'm an individual student, I have a mask on, if the decision was as optional, and I have a mask on and that one does not, and a student does not, and somehow I am the one that's positive, right? Does that student that has not had their mask on have to quarantine at this point?
Could you make that question any more complicated?
Probably, but I will try not to.
Okay.
I guess my question is, can you quantify? I know you can't quantify.
So maybe I'll try to answer it this way. What I'm trying to tell you is that regardless of your vaccination status, and especially if we're able to maintain the three feet, which is typically our typical classroom configuration regardless of COVID, and we have the universal masking, if there's a known positive case that's called in, typically parents call it in and say, hey, you know, my son, daughter, whatever, you know, was tested positive. The immediate process is to go back and see when was the child last in school? They would, we would go in and then we would look at, okay, where were they? Who's the homeroom teacher? Who'd they sit with at lunch? Were they on the bus? You know, there's several hours of information gathering to ensure that we have created the bubble of the, for 15 minutes and the less than three feet slash no masking process. And that would be what we would be working on. Now, if it's three feet or more and still no mask, we would still have to, you know, gather all that information. This, on the other hand, tells us that if a parent calls in and says, my son or daughter has been tested positive, and we have a universal masking policy, and we know we're meeting at the three feet, the first question we would ask is, do they ride a bus? And we would know that on our screen. We would check whether they rode the bus that particular day or within five days. It depends on when we get the notice. Do we get the notice after the child's had symptoms after so many days? So there's some nuances to my response that, you know, if people are weighing every word that I say here, I just want you to be aware that it's not as simple as what I'm saying. And so what you have to do is you have to know, when did the symptoms start? You have to know, you know, did they, when did they go for the test? There's a couple pieces of information that the nurses gather before they look at what days they have to contact trace for. So it could be for multiple days, because a child technically could be in school, had been infected for multiple days and been in school, and touched onto a lot of students. And it's probably more likely that that will happen in this coming year than it did in the previous year.
Yeah, I don't, I actually don't want to start the process of going through every different scenario with you, Dr. Zerby, but I think what I'm trying to point out is that overall, just without where it comes from, that masks work, don't masks work, by not implementing a masking, universal masking, we will have, no matter what, more students out because of the spread of COVID.
That's correct.
I just have one thought, and I guess it goes back to the lunch plan or the cafeteria seating, just because I know in your slides, you stated we're sticking with our plans that we had in place last year. And I also know that we have more students returning to the building this year than last year. So I just want to make sure that we are also able to accommodate, because I know that was one of the topics of discussion last year. If we have more students in the building, I know lunch space seemed like it was an issue in some buildings, and so it seemed like that's worked out. Is that flushed out?
That is. So a couple of the things that we've done is we, like, similar to last year, we pushed into other adjacent spaces to the cafeteria. As an example, at the high school, just across the hallway, we're in a gymnasium. We've also made sure that where we can, we've extended from three to four lunches. We've also purchased additional dividers. These are plexiglass dividers that separate students on the tables. So there's a number of mitigation strategies that we have in place, but predominantly, we're using the distancing of six feet to make that work.
And it's also indicated on here that food consumption in the classroom will be limited. So there will be some consumption of food in the classrooms in some buildings? Is that right?
That is correct.
Do you know what buildings that will be? Just because I think what we want to try to also avoid is having students in the same place without movement in the building, right? So if they are confined to the classroom, just because, and I just want to make sure that point is clear, because I just don't want to care about when we have students just in the classroom, they're not moving around with the exception of going to the bathroom and maybe depending on what grade they are, the recess breaks.
So in terms of food consumption, we, again, we want to try to provide, the original plan with optional masking included was to try to provide as much of a, I'll call it normal, school experience as possible. This plan provides for that as well. It just is suggesting that we make some modifications for distancing at lunch, and that we make the universal masking policy as part of this. However, you know, just because someone takes their mask off to take a bite of something in a classroom, and then after their bite, they put their mask back on, that doesn't make them automatically susceptible within the 15-minute rule. Does that make sense? So what we want to do is we don't want to encourage food to be brought into every classroom, and the food that is brought in is brought in under the control of the teacher when it's appropriate to do that. Now, at certain levels, for example, in high school, there's a little bit more flexibility and fluidity of that than there is, say, at an elementary level. But that's the idea, for us to not dictate that here as a board, but to allow the classroom teacher to, who knows the students and knows how to make the environment as normal as possible, to be able to have that say.
Yeah, I guess my feeling is that this provides the best way for kids to get that live instruction. I mean, kids, otherwise, they're going to, if they have to isolate or quarantine, they're going to be at home on the Google Classroom and just receive their instruction that way instead of with a live meth actin teacher. So that's really, so my rationale echoes that of what Paul was saying, because I think it's really important to get that live instructional experience for our kids this year.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond.
Ms. Kent Crowe.
So, you know, I do appreciate it, and I agree. Our goal is, I'm sorry, our goal is to be absolutely in-person live instruction, but we're doing assumptions here, assumptions, assumptions. You know, and I look at this, and I look at these numbers and data. We just went through E S Y successfully, right, without masks, correct? And so-
The answer is yes.
And I look at these rates of incidence of residents. Is it adults or students? We don't have that. We don't have any incidents happening in our school because we're not even in school yet. Our assumptions, with the amount of vaccinations we offered the teachers, and I'm not going to get into the science because I agree, that our goal is not to go back, both of you guys, because I, there's two different worlds of discussion on science, but I just, I just think that we are jumping the gun. We could pivot if we get into the school. In my opinion, we should never have changed it. We need it to be a requirement that the Montgomery Health should have done. Like, if they wanted it mandated, they should have mandated it. Recommendation, I think we should absolutely recommend it, and I would encourage it, and I would say it is recommended for universal masking. I don't really prefer the universal masking because I really think it takes away some opportunities of real learning, social emotional learning that's going on. That concerns me, because that is my core of like making sure people, all students have the opportunity to learn effectively. But I just have to put in there, these rates are based on adults, and we have assumptions made that, it sounds like we're going to think that all the classes are going to be closed, and we don't have that. We don't have any of that evidence. So we're making healthcare, we're not healthcare experts. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Kent Crowe, I mean, your points are fair, and the challenge is, we don't have information that says, this is what, this is the data on students, children of student of a school age, and this is the data on adults. But what we do have is what the county provides us, and that is, and the chart from PDE for which we live by, and is on community transmission. So to that expect, you know, we have a chart that we need to use, the data that goes with that chart, but your point's well taken, you know, there likely is some difference, or there could be some potential difference between what the community's experience and what school-aged children are experiencing. But I think that the challenge with all of this is that there's not a good choice here at all. And to be honest with you, I mean, like, I don't think, the thing I was trying to refrain from saying is that back in February or March, we were on a big push to get all of our staff vaccinated and get, you know, the communities getting vaccinated, because there was a promise of no more of this. And I think, myself included, I mean, we're all pretty disappointed that I have to bring this recommendation to you tonight. So I don't, I don't have a better solution for you. I wish I did, but I don't think it's a good choice. We can decide not to do universal masking, and our teachers, our staff, our principals, the central administration will make it work, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a good ride. So that's one challenge. And so it's a matter of which path you take and which pain you want to take on. So we can take on that pain, or we can say, hey, well, let's go with universal masking, keep everybody in school. Will that be perfect? No, people don't want to wear this. I know that. But that's, those are the choices before us, and I apologize for putting you in this situation, but as was stated earlier, nobody's making the determination. It's fine to make recommendations, but when you have to put, draw a line in the sand, and that's the point that we're at here today. Ms. Aubrey Lusanese?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. So first, I wanted to apologize to the public for some of the confusion around the scheduling of this meeting. I know there was some back and forth last week. When we had initially pushed to have the meeting last week, we thought that we would have enough board members in attendance. We scheduled the meeting, and then we realized that we would not. And I, in talking it over with the Vice President, Ms. Drummond, realized that the best course of action would be to push off the meeting till tonight, but put the information out for the public so that everyone could be aware and informed. So I do apologize for the confusion, but hopefully everyone was able to get the information they needed to be prepared for this evening. And the number of emails that I have gotten in the past week is evidence that, yeah, the information has gotten out there. I've had some difficult votes while I've been on this board. This is not one of them for me. We set a goal as a board, and it is a district last spring, for in-person education. That was our goal, that was our objective. We were committed to making sure that that would happen. The clearest path to in-person education for the most students, and the teachers as well, is to have universal masking for all. We owe it to the families of our district and the staff to do this. It keeps the kids in class, it keeps the teachers focused on the classroom and not worried about contact tracing. One thing we haven't even talked about here is what happens if there's an exposure to a teacher. We already have a substitute shortage. We have to find a substitute. We can't do the proctors and the Zoom and all of that that we've done before. I don't even want to go down that road. Montgomery County Office of Public Health has helped to guide our decisions throughout this process, but as we have seen in the past 18 months, we have gotten very little in the way of definitive direction from the state and from the county. The nine of us, Ms. Reese included, and Dr. Zerby, the 10 of us, have been tasked with making decisions that none of us wanted to have to make. But here we are. Nothing about this situation is ideal. None of us wants to be making this decision. None of us wants us to be sending kids back to school with masks. When I first talked to Dr. Zerby and heard about this coming before the board, I dreaded telling my own child. He was one of the first kids to get vaccinated in Montgomery County once the vaccine was available under 15. He was excited about coming to school and not wearing a mask. And he knows that I'm up here about to vote on requiring masks because it's what's in the best interest of all of our students. The emails that I've gotten from families, a lot of them have talked about the importance of parental choice. But what I'm hearing on the other side is true health and safety concerns. Our children under 12 have not had the opportunity of even getting a vaccine. If there is a positive case in one of those classes, I can't even imagine the number of students that we would have quarantining and missing instruction. When we look at the information that we have available to us right now, I sit on the pandemic team, you know, when we met in early July, the rates in the county were looking pretty good. By the time we met at the end of July, there was concern in the number of rates, the number of instances of COVID that we're seeing in the county. The prevalence of the Delta variant is becoming more and more of a concern. And if you look to states in the South, you can see what is already happening there, where there are hospitals that don't have beds available, there are schools that are already having issues with COVID spreading like wildfire, where they don't have masks in place. I don't want to see Pennsylvania, I don't want to see Meth Acton become one of those states, or one of those places this happens. So for that reason, I just can't see not having universal masking for our students and staff. It's not what I want, but I believe it's what we need.
Thank you, Madam President. Any other questions? Ms. Hall?
I just, I'd like to say thank you for the presentation. I echo Mr. Winters in saying that this seems like the best model for continuous education for as many students as possible. I have questions still regarding lunch, though. And perhaps this is to enter the weeds, but, and it might be either universal masking or, you know, mask optional, but are we still using- or, you know, mask optional, but are we still using the QR code system proceeding that we had in the high school? The QR code system that we were using where students would scan their seat for contact tracing? Do we still need to use that? And I'm thinking that might be, you know, when you take your phone and. Yeah.
A QR code?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do you remember? I know it was a long time ago. It feels like, are we, will we still utilize that for contact tracing for lunch or is that not necessary based on Montgomery County?
I'm not.
Okay, that's, that's just a small detail.
I'm not familiar with.
And like, just basically would we have to have assigned seats within the lunch still?
Well, we do have assigned seats.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we'll do the assigned seats in the lunch. We'll do the assigned seats in the, in the classrooms. Yeah, we.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to do that. That's, it, you know, I, I think, I think it's important for people to understand that this health and safety plan was, the outline of it was based on the requirements for the federal ESRS three grant. And so we filled it in and we were, we were told to fill it in that, in that way. So some of the detail that you saw in last year's plan are inherent in some of those things that we're doing. It's just that the, the, the language isn't all there. So, yeah, you know, we, we have to do classroom seating, you know, we'll have to know wherever we're sitting at lunch and, and where they're sitting for at the bus and where they're sitting in the classroom.
Okay. And then following whichever way the vote goes tonight, what is your estimate on how often we'll be reviewing this recommendation?
Well, we, we meet weekly and we, we were meeting at, at some time last year, twice a week. But right now, the plan is for the superintendents of Montgomery County to meet with the Department of Health and the I U every Thursday. So we have, we have meetings, so we can continue. The, the county physician's on the call, the department heads are on the call, and we get regular updates. So hopefully, you know, as soon as something breaks, that, that will allow me to share it with the board and to either provide some additional relief to masking or, or other types of, of changes. Or the unfortunate part, that things are getting more challenging, which could be just the opposite of, of, of our hope. We would be in front of you to say, hey, we need, maybe need to do something else. So, you know, the, the mitigation strategies that are outlined in here, take, take us through the, the substantial phase. But depending on the Delta variant, does that, what else does that mean for us? I think they're still trying to figure all that, that out for us. But we will meet weekly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Navarro?
Yeah, thank you. Most of my questions were already answered. I know Jen asked a question about accommodating students with and without 504s and I A P, so I appreciate that. I think Paul summed it up best when he said this is ultimately just about keeping as many kids in school as long as possible. Can you pull back the curtain a little bit on your discussions with the Office of Public Health? Do they, have they given any, any indication as to if or when this guidance may change? You know, part of the CDC's recommendations, not necessarily for schools, but around simply wearing masks indoors, had to do with county levels of transmission, right? We're in the substantial phase now and we've got varying levels of, of incidence and positivity across the county. But on the positive side, our vaccination rates in Montgomery County are fairly high compared to the national average. So hopefully what we see as a spike isn't a spike now. It's just a kind of a dull hump. Did they give you any indication that they may change their guidance in the future? And I don't mean next week, but of what their criteria may be to change that guidance? And might there be a change such that, you know, for say, seven to 12, where children have had the opportunity to be vaccinated thus far? We might move to a spot where maybe seven to 12 doesn't require masking, but K to six does?
So there is, you know, when you read into this based on, on all the information you get and depending on the sources that, that you are, are reading, but, but the county has specifically said that, as, as so did the CDC when they made their, their updated recommendation. This isn't, this isn't about whether or not children of under 12 are able to get the vaccine or not able to get the vaccine. The modification was for vaccinated and non-vaccinated individuals, whereby which would protect everyone from the Delta variant challenge that was starting to spike at, at a rate, and if you remember the four bullet points, at a rate from 1%, one month, 80% of the, of the COVID cases in just a subsequent month. So I think what, you know, they're really trying to understand is, as well as, you know, the, the CDC, I think is trying to really get a handle on what this will look like. Some of the conversation is we might have just a bumpy ride as we did last year. And, you know, that, that certainly don't want to hear. But that's, and, and what I mean by that is, you know, the, the recommendations were, were, were up and down, you know, sideways and we were modifying our plans and doing different things. You know, right now, you know, the, the, just to be clear, the three feet and masking is an exemption to the rule. The protocol is six feet and masking. So likely, likely that, that, the next phase of this would be go from three to six, you know, if, if, if I were a guessing person, that's what I, I would guess. But there, there, the county is likely to continue taking their guidance from the CDC.
Okay, thanks. I mean, that's kind of what I figured, but I, maybe there was some, a bigger glimmer of hope than, than what we see now. I, I, like, like everybody else, right? I'm, I'm tired of this. I enjoyed going to Home Depot without a basket and looking at walls of lumber and screws and. It sucks we're back where we're at, quite honestly. But what I really don't want, and I think everybody agrees, is, you know, we don't want to end up in a situation where we've got kids out of school and God forbid we end up in a, in a virtual situation again. So I, I do agree that this is the best way to keep our kids in school without interruption. I hope our rates stay low and I hope that as our rates stay low, that then the Office of Public Health modifies their guidance and then we in turn modify our plans as well. So, all right, thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Kankel?
Sorry. The one comment I would say is that I want to, in regards to emails, we did receive over 60 emails and I read through every one of them and I apologize for not responding back to them. I should have responded back to every one of them and I appreciate it, but I did read every single one of them. And I did, I did, you know, look at the Excel spreadsheet and I said, 70% of the parents strongly support apparent choice. 18% supported aligning with Methacton's masking policy to update its recommendation and 12% strongly supported universal masking for the entire school day. So I think it's important for us to recognize and understand that although that was just a small subset in the past two days, we have a large constituents who we represent are for choice. And the only other thing I will say, and I apologize, is when we look, the only last thing I will say, because I know I'm probably not convincing the board here today and that's fine, I just want us to realize they mandated it on public transportation and, and, and private transportation, they mandated it. They did not mandate it for the schools, they recommended it. So we're just taking it and we're just going to mandate it. And I understand, I understand everything that you guys are saying. I respectfully get it and I, and, but I just, again, I just go back to, we are not the health professionals. They should be mandating it on us. It's still a recommendation. And, but that's just, I will promise you, that's the last and we'll open it up to further discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kankel. Ms. Kaboo?
I just wanted to make a comment based on what Ms. Navarro said. Looking back and thinking, it's been a year of us in this pandemic and knowing, I know we are stepping back. Many of us were hopeful that the kids will return back to school without the mask just because we have more students that are also very eager and happy to return. And unfortunate, I mean, two weeks ago, things were different, right? And with COVID, it seems to change drastically and I'm sure things will change. But I'm hopeful because the help, the pandemic team will also keep working and staying close to this, that as things change, we are making the decisions and able to pivot. I think one of the things we heard, Methacton was behind in making decisions last year as far as getting our kids back in school. Many parents wanted to have the kids back in school five days a week. I think about it and I think here we are in August, right, with a few weeks for kids to return back. Do I want all the kids to return back five days a week? Yes, I do. Many of those kids deserve to be back in the day, in this, in the building just because virtual is so hard. It didn't work for all students. And if having to implement those things that we put in place last year, which boiled down to socially distancing, keeping the kids apart, hand washing, the contact, um, contact tracing and use of masks to get our kids back in school five days a week, I think many parents will actually appreciate that. I understand the need for choice, but I think also if we're put in a position where we have to close our schools again, there are many parents that are going to be very unhappy. So it's hard because we're not in a position yet where we can say, do we close, do we mandate a mask? But I also don't want to see us in a position where we start school in a short week. You remember when we opened up last year when we started hybrid? We were struggling trying to get a weekend before we were thinking, do we have to close? Whether it was a functional closure or what? And I just hate for us to get in that position where we're, we don't even get a weekend and we're struggling trying to get teachers in, trying to get staff in and, you know, things start to go bad. And I, maybe I err on caution, but I do strongly believe that having a mask policy in place will really help ensure that we can start and get our kids in place. But also hoping that as things change and we find we don't need it or we have to look at it based on grade level, maybe we can come back and make those changes and we, we're able to pivot and make those decisions early on.
Thank you, Ms. Kaboo. Are there any other comments? Madam President, I don't see any other comments from members of the board.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Zerby. So at this time, we'll take public comment on board action items. Obviously, we have only one. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. We ask you to keep your comments to four minutes or less. We may choose to respond to matters following the conclusions of the comments, but it's not a back and forth discussion. It's not productive for the, the conduct of the meeting. We ask that you please introduce yourself with your first name and your municipality. And as a reminder, we can't have anything directed at specific board members. It needs to be directed at me as the presiding officer for the board.
Ashley Wilkerson, Lower Providence. I'm here tonight to speak regarding the proposed revisions to the district's health and safety plan and I'm in favor of updating our policy to align with the recommendations by the Centers for Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics, both of which are recommending universal masking indoors for students and staff. I believe this is the plan that will best enable our district to keep students in person five days a week. I'm speaking tonight not just as a parent, but also as a physician. For background, I have more than two decades of experience providing patient care and in recent years, I've worked almost exclusively in the inpatient hospital setting. Since March of last year, I have provided care for patients with COVID who were admitted to my service. In order to care for these patients and in order to ensure my own safety, it's been critical since the beginning of the pandemic that I stay current on the published literature and the various professional medical organization recommendations regarding COVID-19. At this time, multiple leading medical organizations, most notably the Center for Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics, are recommending universal masking of students and staff due to the current nature of the pandemic. Infection rates, particularly those caused by the Delta variant, are increasing across the country right now as are hospitalization rates. With the majority of our students unvaccinated, we need to continue efforts to mitigate disease spread if we want to do our best to avoid a school year that is interrupted by quarantines and illness and changes to instructional models. Mitigation of disease spread in our current environment includes universal indoor masking. And yes, those recommendations can and will change down the road as do so many recommendations in medicine. It's the nature of the field. We learn more and we change our practice based on that knowledge. I recognize and I understand that people are tired of masks. I'm tired of masks. But being tired of them doesn't change the fact that we are still in the middle of a global pandemic. As much as we all want to get back to normal, we're not there yet. So if wearing masks indoors is what it takes to keep our kids in school five days per week, that's what we need to do. I encourage all of you to vote in favor of this change, which aligns with the expert medical recommendations of the CDC and the A A P. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Marissa Rocco, Lower Providence. Can you clarify the QR code that Ms. Hall asked about? Because it appeared there was a miscommunication here that the board and our Dr. Zerby didn't know what was going on and that was the first I ever heard of that. So if we could clarify that, that would be great. I do feel that both students and parents deserve a choice in masking until it is a mandate. Although I know this board will pass the proposed change to the plan tonight, this is similar to when I and others advocated for our most vulnerable to be in school at the start of the school year last year. I now want to advocate for parents and students to have this choice until this is a mandate. Our positivity rate in the district is roughly 3.5% at least the last I checked. So what happens when we rise above five, above eight or nine? What is the next step? Go back to hybrid? Six feet apart, like Dr. Zerby said, could be the next step? We are basing this decision on assumptions that as the district, district percentage rises, we are assuming it's going to directly affect the classroom. We cannot make this assumption. Ms. Kankel said that in her 70, in her email, 70% of the population wanted choice. So why not poll the entire school and the teachers? Many in this district felt like you let us down last year. We felt like you didn't hear us. So why not ask us? Ask the teachers, students and parents. I want to be clear on a few issues if this passes. With the changes to both the masking requirements and the distancing in the cafeteria, parents deserve an option to now enroll their children in Methacton Online. I emailed the board about that. I heard back from Mr. Winters only. They need time to look at alternate school options if they don't want their kids in a mask. That window of opportunity to enroll them in Methacton Online should be reopened if this passes or allow them other time to look for alternate school. One other request I have, students need to remove their masks when they are performing class presentations, during public speaking, during mock interviews. Students have a hard enough time interacting with adults and peers. We need to help these kids that are hiding behind a mask, using it as a crutch or a safety tool. They need help. Many are struggling socially and can't even speak in front of a classroom. They need to remove them when they have that opportunity. You mentioned the cafeteria distancing. At the elementary level last year, there were schools sitting in an X format, which I know for a fact left some kids sitting alone. No child should sit alone at lunch ever, not one. This is not an inclusive environment and we need to do better. Lastly, if you are masking and you want to maintain a distance of three feet, how will you be holding things like homecoming, school socials? Things need to get back to normal for these kids. They are suffering. Some don't even remember how to interact with each other. What about football games? Can the stands be full again? They will be outside. They won't be three feet apart. Are you going to make them mask while sitting outside in the stands? What about basketball season? Can the kids fill the stands again? Do we want that lively atmosphere back? Are you going to stick to three feet apart or maybe worse, six feet? If you were doing that at lunch, are you going to make them do this at a voluntary event like a sports game? Or will this be up to the family or student to decide if they want to attend and sit how they choose and with their friends? Parents and students need to know this information now. This may affect their school decisions because other schools are moving full throttle to have those things happen and these kids need to be kids again. Thank you.
I understand that people are, have strong feelings tonight and I, I respect that, but I do ask that we just keep the applause during the speaking to a minimum only because it interferes with us being able to hear the speaker and everybody only gets four minutes. So I think it's just respectful to all if you could hold off on that. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Timothy Rhodes from Lower Providence. I'd like to thank the CCP up here with the masquerade that's going on. I would like to say that the National Geographics, okay, they actually did a study in Thailand and said that they are doing such a great job gaining a foothold due to the commitment of masking. Right now, Thailand is experiencing a 600. Right now, Thailand is experiencing a 696,400% increase in COVID cases. So as you can see, masking doesn't work. The mask itself, if it worked, the CDC would have sat there and recommended it for the flu season. It never did. Why? It doesn't work. The flu is 20 times larger than COVID itself. It's not rocket science. It's actually looking at data and actually understanding it. And I can tell by some of the people up on the board, they cannot read. Now let's talk about making sure masks is on kids, okay? So according to NPR, okay, and that's pretty hard for some of you up there, climate change is at 419 parts per million for CO2, okay? As a person wearing a mask for 22 minutes, do you know what the parts per million for CO2 is? For 22 minutes? It's 2,000. So you're going to sit there and tell me that you guys talk about climate change all day long to our children, but force them to wear a mask that produces more than your science is saying is bad for the environment? Oh, let's keep talking about masks. How long does a mask take to dissolve? Does any of you know? I do, because I read it. It's 240 years. That's how long it takes. So all you guys are doing is killing our kids with carbon dioxide and producing large landfills and litter. That's what a mask does. Now, I do want to sit there and say something, and it directed to you over there, okay? One of my girls had in, was outside running around during recess, okay? It was 90 degrees. One of your masked Nazis threw her up against a wall and sat there and scolded her. Yeah, you.
Sir.
No. No, no, no.
The comments are supposed to be directed at the presiding officer.
Okay. That is ridiculous, okay? The last time a national socialist sat there and threw one of my family members off against a wall, they were executed in Auschwitz, okay? That will never happen again. It took you over two months to sit there and respond. And guess what? You didn't respond to the actual incident itself. So I'd be glad to sit there and yank my kids out. Actually, you know what? I'd be glad that all three of my girls would be expelled because of your stupidity. And then I'd be more than glad to sue every single one of you standing up here as a so-called board member. I actually recommend, all those that are listening to me, to do a massive recall for every single one of these board members and put someone else up there in charge.
At the last meeting, I spoke very briefly about my support of the previous health plan that made masks optional for children. Obviously, I was disheartened along with other parents when I heard that the mask or the emergency meeting was being called and the revised health and safety plan making masks mandatory indoors. I was happy to see that it specifically stated indoors since last year, as we know, was required outdoors. But only the elementary school students get recess to allow for that unmasked time during the day. Children in the upper levels do not have that opportunity for that break aside from lunch. So as for the mandatory masking being proposed, I saw the many comments on Facebook and the email responses received from the school board members after being emailed by parents with their concern. I've certainly seen the nastiness, and that's from both sides, and I've seen none of it getting anyone anywhere because posting or even getting up here with all the stats that I've taken my time to research is just a waste of my time and yours. Because for every statistic I would find saying that it's not necessary, the parents that support mask mandating are going to find their own statistics saying it is. And believe me when I say both sides, I'm sorry, both sides of the parties presenting these statistics are going to have them backed by not only their passion for the subject, but with sources, backed by PhDs, RNs, pediatricians, virologists, vaccine makers, et cetera. And both sides will have that. I can show you a study that was done that says COVID particles are so tiny that surgical masks and the ones we wear regularly have absolutely no ability to protect us. And somebody's going to come up here and say that that's wrong. I have doctors to back up what I've said, and they'll say there are doctors that back up what they say. And there we go down the rabbit hole again. But hasn't that been the issue with this pandemic as a whole? It's been a constant question of what's real, what's not, what's fact, what's fiction, what source is accurate and what source is not. But here's a fact I have found to be accurate. All summer long, and I think I speak for a majority of the parents, we have spent the summer giving our kids back whatever type of normalcy we could. Most of us have attended graduation parties, birthday parties, pool parties, public pools, camps, time at the beach, rides on the boardwalk, indoor dining, barbecues, movie theaters, sleepovers, out-of-state vacations with friends and family, sports events, sports in general. And here is a statistic that, please, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. The children in Methacton School District have survived the summer. None have died as a direct result of having COVID alone. And they survived this under the discretion of their parents making a decision whether that was to have them wear a mask or not. We as parents have successfully navigated our children through a summer filled with masked and unmasked people around us. We have successfully navigated our children through the different variants since Delta wasn't the first. Us parents have successfully made all the health decisions for our children that have brought them to this very day. And that is our legal right as a parent, and that is not the legal right of a school board. It's that simple. Thank you.
I'm from Lower Providence. The first thing that I think is probably, I have a bunch of statistics and everything from Montgomery County because I really, based on the numbers that Montgomery County puts out weekly now for COVID, it only, that's for all of Montgomery County. There's over 830,000 residents of Montgomery County. Lower Providence and Worcester make up 4% of that. So I, I still, I'm a little confused as to why we're taking the numbers for all of Montgomery County, which is, again, 830,000 residents plus, and then in Lower Providence and Worcester, there's a total of about 37,000. So for us being 4% of the entire Montgomery County, those, those numbers only deal with our little, Lower Providence and our little Worcester. But again, I, I don't even want to go through all that because I, I think that you guys have all made up your minds as well. But the most important thing, I think, for you as a school board is exactly what Jennifer brought up earlier from the hearing that was in Harrisburg on Friday with the Health Department and the Department of Education. And at that point, that was when Senator Scott Martin asked, since there is not an emergency plan in place this year, like there was last year when it was just a free-for-all, everyone got to do what they wanted to do, this year, there is no emergency plan in place. So he actually asked the Department of Education on, under what law or what statute does the school board have authority to mandate masks or anything else for that matter? And the Department of Education had to go back and talk to their legal team. So we still don't have an answer on that. Do you, I, I would love to hear if you guys know under what law or what statute the school board has the authority to mandate masks or, like I said, anything else.
We may respond at the end.
Hi, my name is Katie Leat. I'm from Lower Providence, and I did not plan to speak, so I don't have anything nice typed up, but I did just want to follow. Because I followed the same, I was pleased to hear Jen bring up that discussion, the meeting from August 6th at the Capitol, and I wanted to just further follow up that he actually did come back and said, Segredy Ortega said that after checking with the legal team, they don't see how what's being imposed by locals are enforceable, or quite frankly, they are definitely opening themselves up to potential litigation. They do not have the authority, as we are not under an emergency declaration. Sorry, I don't like public speaking. So they did come out and say that all of the schools, if they vote to mandate masks, they're opening themselves up to be sued, rightly so, because there is no law that they can dictate health matters and health measures in this matter. I also wanted to comment, I sat up there frustrated, hearing you talk about contact tracing. There was no contact tracing last year. My son was in Team at Skyview Stars. There was a little girl, there was the triplet case and the little girl that sat 12 feet away from him. You had them six feet apart. She was two seats away from him, 12 feet away from him. They were masked the entire time. He did not eat lunch with her. He did not ride the bus with her. He did not socialize with her. He did not see her outside the school. He said he never walked in the halls with her because they were dismissed in rows. And yet you sent the entire class home for seven to 10 days. You pulled my son out of sports for seven to 10 days because you did not do proper contact tracing. In fact, you just quarantined all three classes, three entire classes. So when you stand up here and give us statistics on the number of kids that were sent home last year for quarantining, they are not accurate statistics. And my fear is, once again, you're going to stick my children in masks in school and they're still going to be sent home to quarantine. And frankly, I'm not concerned about quarantine. I'm not concerned about them going home and not being in general instruction because just like the flu or any stomach bug, the same would have happened in the past. I volunteer regularly at Arrowhead, and I remember many times being in there that there'd be a class with literally two kids in the class because the whole class had been decimated by stomach bug. And you know what? We survived. The kids learned what they needed to do, and they survived. Thank you.
I was also not planning on speaking tonight, and I would almost rather look at all of the parents in the room tonight. This is my first school year in Methacton. I have four children in the school district. We began this new school year virtually in a new school district. So as you can imagine, with any time changing schools, my kids had a pretty difficult time. But I just wanted to speak from my heart honestly because I feel very led to speak as a parent to the parents. We can sit up here and use our emotions to argue statistics, to argue political views, to argue stances on anything in the world, but when it comes down to it, we were the ones home with our kids. We were the ones home with our kids, whether we were working full-time or stayed-home parents or working from home that we weren't used to, or going in and out of an office, or whatever our circumstances were. It was us and our children. It was us and our families. It was us dealing with what came home. It was us dealing with what was going out. It was us dealing with the emotions, the struggles, the fights, the depression, possible suicide attempts. These are our children. This is not a circus of politics. This is not a circus of mandates and recommendations. Our children are our responsibility. They're ours. And when our children are placed in a position of harm, it's us. They are not going to stand up and put their lives at risk for our children. We are going to stand up, and we are going to protect our children. Dr. Zerby said tonight, I don't deal directly with the students, but I believe the students have been successful for the most part. How did your student do this year? How were their hearts? How were your hearts? How was your marriage? How was your home? What did it feel like? That's where all of our emotions are coming from, what it feels like at home, what it feels like for our children. We are the voice of our children. We should have the choice. I have a medical needs child. She started this school year very rocky, very, very rocky. She continued through the school year, having a very difficult time. Dr. Zerby said, we dealt an entire year compliant. It's not going to be a good ride, and there's going to be pain. What about the pain that we've already all been through? My child suffered pains that I would have never expected to endure with a 12-year-old. Pains that came with me having no answer, with me having nothing to give her. I would have loved to see a guidance counselor in here tonight because I know that I dealt directly with a guidance counselor at Skyview almost on a daily basis. And I have to say that I will speak her name tonight because Mrs. Pearlie Hadrick was one of the only people that held my hand to make sure that my daughter was safe and that my daughter got the mental health needs that were required to get her back into the school. It is a very difficult thing for all of us to come up here with our opinions, but at the end of the day, it's not about us. It is about our children, and my children are mine, and the choices I make are mine. I put my child at risk every single day at school with her medical needs. She's been at risk in other school, in other school districts. I've gone against other school boards to advocate for my child. I will never stop advocating for my child, and I don't care what your opinions are, what you believe, mask, no mask, Republican, Democrat. I don't, I really don't care if any one of your children were at risk. I would hope that you would know that I would be there to help.
Excuse me, I need to ask you to wrap up.
Thank you.
I have a whole entire speech myself here that I was going to say to the board, but like all of you, I'd like to speak from the heart as well. Yes, all of our children have gone through a lot this year, including my own. Those of us that would like the school board to follow through with the recommendations for universal masking from CDC recommendations, from the Academy of Pediatrics, from Montgomery County Health, is to help our children get back into school five days a week. They're trying to explain to you that if they do not follow this path, there is a chance for our children to still be quarantined, stay home. It's not up to their regulations to do this. It's the government saying, and the county contact tracing to say, who has to be sent home because they have been in contact with somebody without a mask within three feet, somebody with a mask, not vaccinated or vaccinated? All of the rules are confusing. We all agree on that. That is one thing as a community we all agree on. This has been completely confusing for us. Our children have suffered from this, and we all want our children back in school five days a week. The recommendations from these professionals, healthcare professionals, are trying to offer this as a solution. They're recommending this so they can stay in five days a week. So thank you. Thank you, board, for stepping up. This has been a horrible year for you as well. You're right, you are not healthcare professionals. I am, we are not experts in COVID. As a nurse myself, I will advocate for patients and for the youngest of the patients with, who are our children. So I will stand up here and say thank you. Thank you for looking out for their health and safety, for their mental wellness, and for their health. And by doing that, by providing this and changing and updating, you're listening to science and you're listening to recommendations from the experts. And if there is a poll from parents asking us if we would like our children to have universal masking in the school, then please let me know because this was me coming up to speak. I didn't know there was going to be a poll, or else I will email you, and I will be more than happy to participate in that poll. And yes, I want the best for all of our children, including all of yours. Thank you.
I'm from Lower Providence. I'm the proud parent of two children in the Methacton School District. I'm also an infectious disease physician, an epidemiologist, and associate professor of clinical medicine. and the chair of our COVID Therapeutics Committee. I've developed guidelines. I've studied and provided the best treatments for COVID-19 and I've treated hundreds of patients with the disease. I would support a revised decision for universal masking. I know we're not supposed to need masks. We, when we return to school, however, the risks have changed and we need to adapt to those risks. The SARS-CoV-2 Delta variant now represents over 85% of cases and close to 100% at our institution and viral loads over 1,000 times higher than the prior variants, making it much more transmissible. While it was previously true that children's risk of transmission of the virus was exceedingly low, the new data indicates that unfortunately, that's no longer the case. We are currently seeing record hospitalizations and even some outdoor camps in our area have had to shut down because of outbreaks and children. So these are all signals we just need to be aware of. Even with the increased risk of COVID in children, overall, I mean, our kids are going to be okay if they get sick for the most part. But I'm not, I don't want to make this decision just for my child. I also want to make the decision for the most medically vulnerable and the high risk. And one of the affirmative lessons that we've learned in this pandemic is that we're all connected. And just like if there's a child in school who has a severe peanut allergy, I also assume the community responsibility to protect that child just like it were my own. Higher rates of community spread of a highly contagious variant in schools where the protection of vaccines does not yet exist means that it is essential to take the actions to curb some of this spread. And the data that currently exists on masking, both in healthcare facilities as well as in the community setting, aren't perfect. And people have really outlined that. But they, they do support the use of masks at decreasing COVID-19 transmission. And the trick with a lot of these public health measures is they're most effective if everyone does it. And that's the tough thing here. And I recognize this is a very, very complicated decision and it comes with so many potentially negative consequences and challenges. And you've heard all those challenges here and I hope we continue to listen to those challenges because we need to make nuanced decisions for our children to optimize the chances of success, no matter what decision we make. So don't forget these voices. I won't forget these voices and we should continue, continue to listen to them. But in the end, when you make these complex decisions as educators, what I do is I have to go back to my core principle. What is my core principle? My core principle here, right now, is to maximize the chances of maintaining in-person school. And all of the relevant public health agencies have made their recommendations in accordance with this. So as a, as an epidemiologist, as a scientist, as a physician, I support these recommendations. The landscape is ever-changing and when we try to collect the data as quickly as we can, we can try and map that path, but science can only provide a map. And sometimes it's an uncertain map. So really what we need to do is let compass...
Dr. Hamilton, I'm sorry, I have to ask you to wrap it up.
Let our compass be compassion and that should always be our guiding light, especially when we have some of this uncertain data. Thanks.
Good evening. Kelly Arnoen, Lower Providence. Two weeks ago, I asked that you consider revising the health and safety plan to require masks, if not for all grades, at the very least for our K-6 students who are unable to be vaccinated at this time in order to maintain continuity of instruction. First, I'd like to thank you for meeting tonight before the school year starts and reconsidering the health and safety plan that was proved in July. I spoke with many other parents after that meeting in July who were extremely concerned for not only the health and safety of their children about optional masks, but also very concerned about the amount of in-person instructional time students be missing out on due to quarantining if masks were not required. We're all well aware of how rapidly the Delta variant is spreading right now, nationwide as well as locally. I know that you are aware, but for people who may not be, there was a local dance school that just this past week, the kids were there for several hours a day. And now there's an outbreak of at least 10 kids still waiting on cases back from that. Those students were at that school for about four hours a day, unmasked. If it had been a school setting, the quarantining those students are now doing would be a much different situation. They'd be at home missing out on instruction. As much as we all had hoped to be past COVID by this point, unfortunately, that is not the reality. I would like to express my support of mandatory masking in school for the start of the school year as it is strongly recommended by both the AAP and CDC. This is the time to listen to the experts, the medical experts. The science is very clear that masks are most effective when all parties are wearing them. Thankfully, we have a virtual option available and if a parent is truly not comfortable sending their child to school with a mask, following the current guidelines by the overwhelming majority of medical experts, they can attend in a virtual environment mask-free. Last year, it seemed as though everyone just wanted to get the kids back into in-person school. I know that certainly where my four children, who are all too young to be vaccinated, would prefer to be. And as much as we all had hoped that things could be back to normal this year, it's simply not feasible, safe, or responsible at this time. I believe our goal should be continuity of in-person instruction. I'm coming from a teaching background with this. That is what matters right now. Without mandatory masks, the interruptions due to exposure, quarantines, and illness weigh much higher. While masks aren't ideal for anyone, they're better than quarantining in isolation and the loss of social and emotional learning that will occur when kids are excluded from school. Please vote to approve the mandatory mask to keep our kids safely in school, following the guidelines laid out by the medical experts and take the initiative to make the hard decisions that others seem to be unwilling to make at this time. Thank you.
Sorry. Those were two very hard acts to follow. Thank you. Julie Stern, Lower Providence Township. We can all agree that a return to the classroom is the goal for all of our students this year. But in order to do so, it must be safe for everyone. Are masks normal? No. Are they annoying? For sure. Do we all wish that it was September of 2019? Oh my gosh, don't we ever. But we cannot act like it is because it is not. Do I wish my vaccinated high school student didn't have to wear a mask this year? For sure. But he will because it keeps him and his classmates safer. I'm a pediatrician who cares for children with cancer and other blood disorders, whoops, which may impact their immune systems. They are in the fight for their lives. But guess what? They get to go to school too. They're not scared. They are braver than every single person in this room. I don't know what's going on here. Why are some so blasé when it comes to the health of our children? Kids do not get sick from COVID. That's the rumor. But the reality is, they can and they do. You don't want your child to be in a situation where you could have done something to prevent them from getting critically ill. My kids, who are treated for cancer, don't have a choice about their disease. It came upon them. We can do things now to make this less common for kids to get sick from COVID and parents and grandparents. I agree. It's been nice to have a summer where things were a bit more normal. But Delta has changed the game and we are in a different place than we were in June and July. Look a few hundred miles south to see where we could be if we don't make some hard choices now. We are a community which should care for each other. We did well with in-person school last year because we used mitigation strategies. You can't throw those out the window and expect the same results. When CHOP put universal masking in place in April of 2020, our staff-to-staff transmission plummeted because masks work. And if they cause CO2 retention, your surgeon would pass out in the operating room and they don't. Choices have consequences and we have responsibilities with our freedom. Get vaccinated, wear a mask. Think about the students sitting next to your child in their classroom. Give your kids some credit. They'll rise to the challenge.
Never a dull moment at a board meeting. While we're sorting through the technical difficulties, I think we'll just take a five-minute recess so everybody can stretch their legs. It'll be a little less awkward.
Dr. Zerby? Dr. Zerby? Let's call an audible, and we're going to have Paul's microphone be the microphone of record because, sitting here waiting for something to change, we're all going to grow old. So why don't we do that? And then everyone on the school board, we can all slide down to give the appropriate spacing, and we can continue with the meeting.
Hi. Patty Chipman, Lower Providence. Before you get started, I just want to make sure everybody's situated and settled. So we're going to restart the meeting now. Thank you.
I'm good. Really important now. Patty Chipman, Lower Providence. I know I'm not going to change anyone's opinion here. It seems like everyone's pretty well on. But I would like to know, like, an end date because COVID is not going anywhere. Is this going to be for a whole year? Are you talking a month? Are you -- when -- how often are you going to review it? I find it interesting that everyone that's for masks takes their mask off to speak. So I would like to know, how's that impact teachers, kids? They're not -- are they going to have microphones that they can get up and speak to the classroom? I had one other one that I forgot because now I'm nervous. But mostly importantly, I would like the end date for this because I don't see it ending anywhere. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Opperman. I am a resident of Worcester Township. I also own the Empowering Youth Center up in Trap. I am leading programs that are teaching stress management and healthy coping skills to children ages five to adult for the past six years. I am extremely passionate about the mental wellness of children in the school district, in every school. My grandson is going into first grade at Methacton. He had to have his experience of kindergarten on Zoom and then going to school with the mask. He was petrified that he was going to die with the fear with the children. So for people our age, we're older and we missed a whole year of life. When you're talking about kindergarteners and first graders missing the importance of socialization, running around a schoolyard with masks on. A little girl came up to him the first time she met him and said, "Oh, my gosh, you're real." He was in kindergarten on Zoom for however many months until March. And these kids are experiencing something that is affecting them. I was an operating room nurse eight hours a day. I can tell you that you get tired wearing a mask eight hours a day, and we were able to take breaks in between cases. These children are not getting breaks. My granddaughter is going into eighth grade at our Cola. They don't get breaks. They didn't get breaks last year. I'm grateful for the teachers who said, "Okay, kids, let's take a little mask break because you've had these on all day." The kids did not do well. They were tired. They had styes in their eyes. Talk to any eye doctor, they will tell you the amount of styes because of the infection, because of the bacteria. I would love to talk to Dr. Hamilton about infectious disease and what you think could happen with kids wearing masks eight hours a day and on the buses, and some of them had long commutes. That bacteria that keeps coming into your body is going to go into your face, is going to cause acne, it's causing all kinds of things. Does the board have data that talks about what could happen to a child who wears a mask all day? They can get infections. The flu has been around for years. My mother died of the flu two years ago. Do we mask because of that? No. But it's a disease that kills children, and it kills adults. And Dr. Hamilton said it well, and I think the research shows, our children will be okay. The doctors now know how to treat COVID. The people who have a problem with COVID are the people who don't get early treatment. They don't go to the doctors. I have a friend who died because he didn't go to the doctors. He was diabetic. He had leukemia previously, but he wanted to go to Florida on an airplane in April. He shouldn't have done that. But he made that decision, and it was his choice. Parents need to be able to make the choice for their children. Our children will be okay. The doctors know how to treat it. What I heard tonight concerned me because I heard the concern is, keep everybody in school, keep everybody in school. Let the parents decide. It was great I was here the last two meetings. Let it be optional. Let it be optional for a parent to decide what they want to do with your children. If your child is immune compromised, by all means, leave them home. We were told when the positivity rate went below 10% in Montgomery County that that would be okay. We're like at five in the whole county. And to the woman who spoke, our area, even less. The kids will be okay. We know the vaccines aren't working. We all kind of knew that was going to happen. But it's going to be a problem for the children mentally that you're not thinking about. And there are other infections they can get. I feel you're putting them at risk in more ways than one. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mike Snyder, Lower Providence. I have a child, and it's going into high school. I'll be real quick. I just want to make a few points. I know it's getting late. I just want to talk a little bit about science. It seems like it's a lot of things being said that the science is all clear, that the masking is going to be very effective for kids in schools. But I'd like to note, this has been only one study that's been peer-reviewed outside the United States, and that came through as inconclusive. I wish that the CDC had the foresight. They certainly have the money to be able to do their own peer-reviewed study for how effective masks are in transmission within a classroom setting, but they didn't. So we don't really know how effective it is. I wish we knew more about that. But in any case, there's a factor of risk-reward. Everything in life is a risk-reward, and we know what the risks are, we know what the rewards are. In this case, what is the downside of having the kids' masks? I know for my son, he wears glasses. His glasses get fobbed up. Other kids have skin conditions that aggravates them. So it's not that it doesn't do damage also to have the kids wearing masks. I know people have talked about that a little bit, but it's something that has to be considered because the risk of kids contracting it and having any disease is very minimal, as we know. I'd also like to say that -- and also, when you're having the mask, you miss the social cues that kids communicate, which is very important when they're socializing at this age. And by the way, everyone in -- my son's going into high school. They're over 12. I know somebody mentioned 12 and can't get vaccinated. Everyone over 12 is in the high schools, so the parents are making their decision whether they get their kids vaccinated. So that's a parent decision, and I think the mask should also be a parent decision. And I'll also say that we're not in a vacuum. So, okay, we're so protected here, everyone's wearing masks in the school. Then you go out, you go to church, you go to the YACME, you go to Redners, you go to McDonald's, you play with your friends in the neighborhood. You know, this is not a vacuum. It's the community. If we're going to be really serious about mask mandates, then let's have it completely everywhere because the kids do more than just go to school. So finally, I'd like to say that we are appropriately concerned about our kids, and we want to do the best for them, but the parents need to make that decision. The parents know best about what's best for their individual kids. They have individual needs. Maybe some can handle the mask very well, and it's great. That's for them, maybe other ones can't. But that's up to the parents, in my opinion. I'd also say that, you know, it is important for us to do everything possible that we can do to protect our kids from the virus, from COVID, from the Delta. So maybe this was talked about earlier, but do we have a percentage of -- what percentage of teachers have been vaccinated? I don't know if we have that percentage. It'd be good to have that percentage, release it to Methacton. Because if we really want them to be protected, we need all the teachers vaccinated. Maybe make that a mandate. I don't know if that was talked about. Should that be a mandate? I'm not saying it should be, but was it discussed? Because that's a vector. So that's all I have to say. I'd like to look forward to having those answers, those questions answered. Thank you very much.
I'm related, that guy. I didn't actually prepare anything, but--
I'm sorry, could you just say your name?
My name is Kathleen Snyder, and I have lived here in Lower Providence Township for over 20 years. I have both children that go to school here. And I don't have anything prepared, and I've listened to all the experts who come here that actually in medical professions and make recommendations. And I also want to remind everyone who make decision about my children, it is a recommendation. It's not a mandatory to wear masks, right? I'm also in the medical field, and I deal with statistical analysis all day, so I'm not going to sit here and tell you about statistical analysis. But I would like to ask you and also reminding all the medical professions, understand that when you treat a patient, it has to be their choice. It has -- you have to seek their consent. You will do the best for your patient, but you leave it to their consent. And if they are underage, you will leave it to the parents, the guardians, to make the decision for them whether or not they want their child, how they want their child to be treated. You cannot, by law, you cannot treat a patient without their consent. So please do not make decision about my children without my consent. If you want your children to wear masks because you want to protect them, then please, by all means, do that. Please do not take away my freedom as a parent. As a citizen, please realize that I come from a communist country. I, my family came to this country, and we come from a communist country. We know what it's like to live in a country having your freedom taken away. And I would like to ask you, please do not take my freedom away. If I want my children to wear masks, I will have them wear masks. If I don't want my children not to wear masks, then that is my choice. Please do not make decision about my children's future because medical condition can be treated. Mental condition will last for life, and it will impact them. It will take them to adulthood, and it's some of them irreversible. So I'm asking you, please allow my children that let me make decision what's best for my children. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Erin McCool, and I'm from Lower Providence. I just wanted to recognize that this year has been incredibly difficult all around. I understand there's a lot of emotion in this room. We have all dealt with children and ourselves who have suffered significant mental health issues, stress, as a result of a global pandemic. I recognize that. And often, what I've noticed, and I think many can attest to this, in situations where you feel out of control, which I think we all have felt a loss of control since March of 2020. As humans, we tend to grasp onto the things that we think that we can control. And I have heard a lot of parents who believe that by choosing to mask or not mask their child allows them a level of control over this virus. We know there's overwhelming science that tells us ways that we can protect ourselves and ways that we can help to stem what is happening. There are not two sciences. There are not two sciences. Science is consensus, and when we find new information, we act upon that information. And we know that my mask protects you, and your mask protects me. And it is not a choice. My child deserves to be in school. All of our children deserve to be in school. And sending my child into a classroom where children are allowed to be unmasked in that classroom is not a safe place. It's irresponsible for the board, based on the guidance that we're getting, to create that situation for my child. And I understand that you feel it's a choice for you, but it takes away all of my choice. And to put a mask on a child is something that we can manage. I have managed masks with children since July of last year at my place of work. We ran the childcare center, and we ran a summer camp program for two years. I have stayed on top of what the county is recommending. I have been in touch with the county over that time, and we have adapted our mask policy as necessary. I was so excited midsummer this year when we actually relaxed our mask policy. We're outdoors primarily, but we still ask the child to -- children to mask when they're close together. In the last two weeks, with what we're seeing with the Delta variant, we made the very difficult decision to go back to masks. If that changes, we will gladly change, and I'm asking the district to follow the advice of the Montgomery County, the American Association of Pediatrics, the CDC, and be adaptable. And right now, it feels that we need to go into school with all kids masked to create a safe classroom. I manage masks with kids in many ways, and yes, we take masks off when I am speaking at a microphone, and I am far more than six feet away from you. That is a safe situation. Do that with kids, too. We spend a lot of time outdoors. I encourage you to continue-- I encourage you to continue to find ways to get teachers to take kids outside where they can socially distance, they can take appropriate mask breaks, and we can manage this. Putting a mask on a kid in school is not a sentence to have them in a mask for eight hours a day. When we do make these decisions, we do base risk and reward. And I'm hearing things about masks are uncomfortable. Yes, they are. Yes, they cause rashes. Yes, it decreases your CO2. But guess what? That's a temporary situation. And what we're talking about is COVID cases that are in fact rising in children. And we do not know the long-term outcomes of that. And looking at the risk versus reward, I would much rather have my child put a mask on temporarily than deal with rising cases, pediatric cases of COVID. I don't know how many people in this district have had a child in the hospital with RSV. It's a very common situation. And I can tell you, as a parent who has dealt with it multiple times, to watch your child struggle to breathe on the way to the emergency room, or in a NICU, or in a PICU, it's not a situation I want to see any of you in.
I'm sorry, I need to ask you to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? Okay.
Hello, my name is Deanna Regger, Lower Providence. I have an incoming ninth grader, seventh grader, and kinder this year. I want to start with thanking the board for your continuous dedication to methactin and drafting up policies and procedures and all the decisions you put into making these. It's not an easy feat. And that was before a pandemic and strong divisions with everything. And everybody wants the best practices for keeping everyone safe, both physically and emotionally within our schools. It's not easy. Just given the current case numbers and the CDC governance and other recommendations regarding masking for the safety of our children, staff, and the community around us, I am asking that the universal mask mandate be instituted currently in our district. I feel it should be for all the grades, regardless of vaccination status, especially for those grades with children unable to have that choice. And I know we all should respect everybody's choices. And if they don't have the choice to have a vaccination yet, and we put them in an environment where it is not as safe, I just don't agree with it. And I think this is the safest way to go about it at this point in time. Since anyone can carry and pass on the virus, this would be the best way to do it. I strongly feel this is what is right course, even though it might not be the most popular. I do not want to wait until numbers are out of control and those who might need to go to the hospital can't go because they're full and have people getting seriously ill and ask that masks are put on, but be a part of the prevention of that until we get to the point where we can safely do so. I appreciate your consideration, and I'm looking forward to getting through all this mess together as a community united and not divided for the common good of each other. Thank you.
Before we continue with public comment, I know that there are a lot of really strong feelings and that we may not agree with what every speaker is saying. But I'd ask you to please be respectful and not disruptive to the conduct of the meeting and to the speakers at the podium. Thank you.
I'm really nervous. Hello, my name is Christine Crimler. I'm a resident of Lower Providence and a parent of two teens, two teens in Methacton School District. And I'm for a parent choice. My kids have severe epilepsy. So I don't know if you've ever experienced a child having a seizure, but you'll probably have less than one second to get to my child, take that mask off before they suffocate. I have major anxiety as it is, let alone them going to school praying someone knows or will have the carriage to take their mask off for them. Can you assure me that someone will take the mask off in case they have a seizure? To date, my children have never worn a mask, nor will I make them wear a mask because I'm just afraid, you know, if they have a seizure, something will happen to them. Currently, I do have statistics from the Health Department. So there are 1.9 million children in PA. Zero have, zero children have died of COVID. Currently, there are 168,000 cases out of 1.9 million children, and less than 10% of that have transmitted to teachers. Children have repeatedly shown not to be drivers of this contagion. It is well-accepted that children have a statistically zero chance of dying from COVID. CDC shows that the K through 12 mortality rate from or with COVID is .00003%. Any intervention, especially one that is prophylactic, must cause fewer harms to the recipient than the infection. Since children have the lowest death rate from COVID infection, the cost benefit of requiring children to wear an investigational face covering with emergency safety issues is especially difficult to justify. According to the Pennsylvania COVID-19 Dashboard today, I can get you that page if you need it. No child under the age of 20 has died of COVID-related symptoms since the state began collecting this data. Anthony Fauci was very clear that asymptomatic transmission was not a threat. He stated, "In all the history of respiratory-borne virus of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver outbreaks." The driver outbreaks is always a symptomatic person. Also, informed consent is required for investigational medical therapies. Regardless of the lack of safety and efficacy behind the decision to require a child to mask, it is illegal to mandate an EUA-approved investigational medical therapy without informed consent. Mask use for viral transmission prevention is authorized for emergency use only. Emergency use authorization by the FDA means the products are investigational and experimental only. I'd like to add, in Pennsylvania, the Child Protective Services Code specifies that interfering with the breathing of any child, is considered child abuse. And mandated reporters, which includes all school staff, are required to report such abuses. This law has not been suspended by the General Assembly, and the mandate put forth by the governor under the Disease Prevention and Control Law of 1955 does not supersede this code. According to the provisions of 236303B dot 1, AII-N8V relating to child abuse constitutes interference with the breathing of a child. One last thing. There was a study for masks in Germany. A German study involving over 25,000 children reveals the major negative impacts on the physical, psychological, and behavioral health of children may be far more widespread than reported in the media and by government officials, affecting approximately 68% and contributing to 24 distant health complaints, according to parent-submitted observations.
I have to ask you to wrap up now. Thank you.
On average, children wore a mask for 270 minutes a day, with impairments being reported at nearly the same rate by children, 67%, as the parents.
I have to ask you to wrap it up.
All right, well, these are my children, and I make the medical decisions for my children.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I try to be really short. I'm not going to write about all the things I wrote because it's all the same thing everybody else said. So again, just talking from my heart.
I have to ask you to say your name first.
Oh, sorry. So, Randy Alcavino, Lower Providence. Just anybody here who's a germaphobe like me. I'm a huge germaphobe. And we've all, anybody who's been here has been exposed to any viruses. Anybody was at this microphone to this point. Just so you guys know. Right. You got it. You got it. You can have it when you go home. Okay, so I was, like I said, I'm a germaphobe. My sister, she's a nurse. And she, when she was on the front lines of COVID, I'll tell you what, I was freaking out. I wiped down my groceries. I was scared of everything. I spent a whole year, yes, or last year, I said, just being totally freaked out, you know, about this whole virus. I did all the right things. My family was like basically on lockdown. You know, I, it was not okay. And then I still got it. I still got it. And I got it worse than anybody else in my family. You know, and it was, it sucked. But it no worse than a bad flu, you know? And I was like, wow, I can't believe I spent a year of my life acting like a complete freak germaphobe, you know, over something that I wish I would have just gotten in the first place. It sucked having no taste and smell for like a month. That was horrible. I still don't lose any weight, though, so that sucked even more. Anyway. What it is, is that, you know, you know what's worse, though? Is these masks, because on these kids and all of you, it is so weird not to see your faces. And I'm right now, I want to know how well you're breathing. How well are you breathing? Imagine kids doing that for eight hours. That is horrible, horrible. I know you guys are like, this sucks. And you guys want to get the hell home. So just remember that when you think about this decision of our kids spending eight hours in those masks. Okay? Anyway. I wish you wanted to say something. We'll be done.
Hello, everyone. My name is Holly Ash. And I also am here from Lower Providence. I have two kids that are, one's going into seventh grade, and the other one is going into fourth grade, which both of them do not like wearing the mask because they come home all the time with headaches, problems with their eyes, difficulty thinking, difficulty taking tests because they have to have it in there, and they can't concentrate. So it's not good. But I also am a nurse, and I have been a nurse for 17 years. And I enjoy doing it, and I enjoy taking care of people. But these masks, they don't protect. The people that came in with COVID, the people that were dying, they all wore the masks. They all, and a lot of them died, which is very unfortunate. And now people are doing a lot better. We barely see anybody with COVID, you know? So I don't know. I just feel like that we should have the choice to be able to wear the mask or not. And also, the kids, if they don't want to wear the mask and they're not doing good, they shouldn't have to wear the mask. And that's all I wanted to say.
All right. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Jessica Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. I've been giving a lot of thought to what I would say this evening regarding the proposed health and safety plan. I could ask if you've seen the video of Dr. Dan Stock, a functional family medical physician specially trained in immunology and inflammation regulation from Indiana, who stated that the CDC is not following the science and is providing improper recommendations. He is a medical expert. He said the virus is not like smallpox. He said it will not go away. What's unclear today is are we allowing for medical waivers, like neighboring school districts like Park Valley? Parents still don't understand what is the waiver process. I've seen over the past year, Methacton School Board is only interested in taking the advice of groups like the Montgomery County Department of Health, which is really more of a political organization than a health organization. So then I thought I could ask if you're listening to the parents. Obviously, Ms. Crankford was, but nobody else is responding. And not just the ones that are fortunate enough to be able to come here tonight or brave enough to speak out. What is the majority saying? People are afraid. Some people in this community are determined to cancel people. That's not right. As elected officials, you should be taking into account what the public wants. What is best for their children? Only parents know. From, or take into account what the union wants because just days ago, they supported mask choice. Many teachers want mask choice. If you were representing the community, we would not be seeing 9-0 votes for everything. And yet, this is what is happening while you're telling us you're consulting with your quote-unquote "experts." It almost sounds like you're telling us that you know what's best for our children. I'm guessing we're about to hear another unanimous vote, or maybe 7-1, for the newly revised plan. So I decided tonight I would instead ask, what is the district going to do to work on social skills development and teach our children to make eye contact? Okay, this is a problem right now that the masks are creating. Governor Wolf has not mandated masks, and we are seeing neighboring districts from Bucks County across the Commonwealth make them optional. So what is Methacton doing to ensure the equity that we are so focused on for our children? There is data to support that children can read basic emotions by looking at the eyes and the forehead, but that needs to be taught. Will we be teaching that? Will we be having more social skills groups established to compensate for the masks? How are you proposing to reduce the social, emotional, and psychological impact that these masks are having on our children, on the kindergartner that's shy and withdraws hiding behind the mask, on the anxiety-ridden 12-year-old now afraid to remove their mask, on the 16-year-old with panic attacks that chose to get vaccinated to avoid wearing a mask and is now doubting the effectiveness of both? I have heard discussions on Rachel Sore, and yes, we have wonderful teachers that will do their best to help each and every one of the students, but they are feeling unsupported by you. They are afraid of retaliation for speaking up. The union survey recently indicated that only 40 teachers would encourage their peers to apply for employment with Methacton. That is 13% of our teachers that responded. Please provide the children, the teachers and the parents with a voice in the decision for the educational environment for our children. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Kelly Mann, Lower Providence. I'm here tonight and support a parent choice for masking. There is not a mask mandate in Pennsylvania. We are not under an emergency declaration. I'd like to thank Jen Crankford for mentioning tonight that 70% of the emails received were in favor of parent choice. Why are we not polling the parents? Many of us are here advocating for choice. There is no finish line with this virus. Parents will continue to have varying comfort levels. We are asking as parents to have the choice to do what's best for our own children and weigh the risks and benefits for our own children. Please represent all the constituents. Thank you.
Hi, Amy Smith, Lower Suster. I just wanted to say thank you to the board for calling special meeting and not waiting until the full board meeting to make this decision. I think it's, it's good that we're, that you're having this conversation a few weeks out so that people know what to expect for the school year. I just want to say that I do support the universal masking mandate. COVID is a communal problem. It's not an individual problem. And I think that it's unfortunate that we're here in this situation. You know, we don't have all the answers. This has been going on a long time. We all have COVID fatigue. Some of us have, know people who have had COVID. Some of us know people who have had COVID and have suffered medical complications from COVID. Some of us know people who have died from COVID. It's touched our community in multiple ways. We have families right here in Methacton whose, whose parent, children, whose parents are still suffering the effects of COVID. It's a real danger, and it's unfortunate that this is where we are. But I think, in my opinion, and I'm not a medical expert by any means, my opinion is that we do what's the easiest thing to make everyone have access to the schools. And I wear a mask sometimes 10, 12 hours a day at work. Again, I don't work in the medical Again, I'm, I don't work in the medical field, but I wear a mask for long stretches of time. It annoys me to no end, to no end. But I do that because I want to protect my coworkers. I want to make sure that if I'm carrying a viral load, I'm not spreading it to anybody else. We don't know what the long-term effects are. There's, there's children who have had COVID and have been completely fine, but we don't know if down the line, there's going to be any elevated risk for those children because they were exposed to COVID and, and that they had it. And I just think we make decisions as a community in the best interest of everyone. And I, I personally feel like this is the best decision for our community.
Good evening. Greg Young, Lower Suster. I wasn't sure if I was going to make this meeting tonight, so I didn't have anything prepared, but I just jotted down a few comments. Talking about masks tonight is going to be a waste of time. We know with almost absolute certainty that we're looking at 8-0, 7-1 at best. You know, we've seen 9-0 votes since, you know, most everyone's been attending these meetings with Zoom. It's 9-0, 9-0, 9-0, 8-1 if we're lucky. We need a board with diversity of thought. Diversity of opinion.
This is supposed to be about the mask?
This is about the mask.
Okay.
It's about your vote that's going to be 8-0. It's about your vote that's going to be 7-1 because we have one person that has a dissenting opinion, but maybe sometimes is too afraid to voice it because maybe there's harassment. So we need, we need balance on this board. It's so we have a balance of votes. Votes are against masks, for masks, whatever it may be. You know, this bizarre reality of unanimous decisions shouldn't exist. We should have variation. That's all I have to say. But have a good night.
All right. Is there anyone else with public comment? All right. So now we can move on with our agenda. May I have a motion to approve the revisions to the health and safety plan as presented? Mr. Navarre, is there a second? Ms. Perdue, comments from the board? I did want to address just a couple of things that came up during the public comment, just for clarification. The QR code that was referred to at one point was a practice that happened at the high school where the students were scanning their QR code on their table to indicate where they were sitting. It was done to assist with contact tracing. That's the type of in-the-weeds, detailed, oriented things that I would not expect the superintendent of schools to be involved with. He was not involved in contact tracing. So again, that's what the QR codes were. As far as the legality of masks, we have a statement from our solicitor. None of us sitting up here are lawyers. We have a lawyer for that reason that represents our district, and our solicitor has, has given us guidance that this is well within the legal aspect of what the board can do. I understand. Excuse me. Excuse me. There's no calling out. Your time was already passed. So I know that there's concern about whether or not we have the right to act in a child's best interest, and the reality is we do. That is the nature of public school. If our solicitor was here, he could cite you the exact law that we're talking about. But basically, schools are allowed to add, act in loco parentis. We act as parents. We take care of your children when they come here. That is the function of public school. There are so many ways that we act as, as custodians, as guardians of your children when they come in those doors, and this is one of them. One of the questions that was asked was what percentage of our teachers are vaccinated? As best as I know, we are not permitted to ask our staff whether or not they are vaccinated. They can voluntarily share that information, but as far as I know, we are not required to get that information from them. And as far as the social, emotional needs of students, I have been working with someone from the county. It's something that has been on our radar. If anyone has paid any attention for the last six years at these board meetings, you know that mental health is a very important priority for me on this board. It's something that we have been looking at. It's something that we are working on so that our students will be met with teachers and staff who are prepared to meet their needs when they come in our doors. Any other comments from the board?
Just to clarify, we do have a number of vaccination number for teachers, do we not? I thought we collected that last year, that we had provided a questionnaire and we received. Am I not wrong, over 400 teachers? Or did we not send out a questionnaire to see whether we're vaccinated or not?
We, we know how many people had signed up for the vaccine. That's all we know. So whether they, whether they went and got the vaccine, that's, that's, that's the data
Any other comments from the board?
My only last comment is, I mean, I understand. We, we have to understand though, Kim, that these parents are frustrated, and we have all are for the betterment of the children, like in all areas. So again, my only line is, I like that Greg thought I was getting bullied. I don't usually, I'm, I'm not that way. So, but I think what we do is we have to respect that it was a recommendation, and I highly encourage that recommendation. I just want you to, I wanted to change the narrative. I highly recommend it, but it's a recommendation, and it's not a requirement. And that's just where I stand. It, it should be parent choice. And I just want to just put that out there again. That's just my
Let's keep it down, please, so we can continue with the meeting. I think we all would like to get home tonight. And Ms. Kankrow, I agree with you. I do think that we need to respect parent choice whenever possible. But I think that we also have to be cognizant of when parental choice could jeopardize the health and well-being of other students. And that's where I think that we need to be conscious of what's in the best interest of all of our students. And, and we can't help our children. We can't educate our children if they're not coming into the school. We don't have a backup plan of the hybrid environment anymore. So in order to keep the kids in the buildings where they can be safe, where they can be fed, where we can address their social, emotional needs, I feel like this is the best way forward. But I, I get, I get where you're coming from. I think we are all very frustrated and wish that we weren't here. I think we agree on that.
I know a comment was made about ESY or the summer program and the students being in a position of not wearing a mask. And I do want to say, you have to take into context that we didn't have the number of students in the buildings that we're going to see when we return in September or the end of August. And those numbers tend to make a big difference. And I wanted to touch, nobody here on the board, I, I have known Jen since I came into this district. I don't think she's the type of person that anybody can bully, because she's a very strong person. She sits up here and she speaks her mind. Whether people don't think there's diversity on this board, I think the board stays very true to making sure that we are reviewing the facts. We are looking at what's going on. Methacton is not the only school district that's in this pandemic. And many school districts have shifted. Some of them have shifted as far as states and requiring masks in their school district. So this is not a Methacton thing, and I'm pretty sure many parents will see those changes come across. But the board do not bully not one individual into making a decision that favors everyone, or to ensure that we have a 9-0 vote. Everyone sits here and come in and make their own decision. And so that's the way it operates. I make my own decision based on the facts, what we have at hand and what's going on. But it's not reflective with outside discussions that we have outside of here. Everything we do is right here in front of the public's eye.
Yeah, just to repeat what I said before, we don't want to be here, right? We're all sick and tired of this. Wearing masks, nobody wants to be in this. But this is where we are. Last year, we begged our government and our senior leaders in, in government and in medical profession for guidance, and, and we were bereft of any guidance, and we were left on our own. We've gotten that now. We have it. This decision tonight, to me, is very clear. We have guidance from the leading experts in our country and the world telling us that the best thing that we can do right now for our children and for our communities is to put masks on our kids in school K to 12. I think we'll do that tonight. Thank you.
And I know a question was asked about the end date. So maybe Dr. Zerbi, you can speak a little bit more about the process and the pandemic team's efforts in reference to the end date as far as what happens with the masking requirements?
Well, with masking, as well as other mitigation strategies, we will continue to meet weekly. When I say we, I'm talking about myself and other Montgomery County superintendents with the Montgomery County Department of Public Health, Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, and the county doctor, and CHOP, to review the status of community transmission, not only nationally, statewide, but here in Montgomery County. And based on the information provided in those meetings, I would immediately, if, if there was a, a matter that needs to be increased, or a matter that needs to be decreased, or some change, you know, I would bring that before the district pandemic team. We, we convene a meeting as, as soon as, as reasonably possible. Then that information, based on the input from the pandemic team, will be provided to the board. If there's a necessity for a special meeting whereby we can either intervene to relax, relax some of the mitigation strategies, or because we have to increase them at, at an odd time, I will recommend to the board president that we hold a special meeting similar to the one we have this evening, and we will then get that on the calendar, advertise, and make that available for public input as we see this evening. But that all can happen, you know, in a matter of, of a few days, once we have information. So I'm confident that as we continue to have the discussions and we gather more information, good or bad, we will make that available to the pandemic team, make that available to our parents, and certainly make that available if a vote is needed by the board, to make any shifts or changes in any of the mitigation strategies, including masking.
Is, is the Methacton pandemic team scheduled to meet on a regular basis going forward in the school year?
We meet monthly, once the school year starts. We, we met on a as needed basis during the summer.
Any other comments from the board? Okay. All those in favor of the revisions to the health and safety plan as presented?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So with a vote of seven to one, the motion carries. At this time, we'll take courtesy of the floor. This is a time for members of the community to come forward to speak. We can speak on any matters that may come before the board. We ask you to keep your comments to four minutes or less. And again, introduce
Should I wait for Mr. McGinnis to return?
No, just go ahead.
No, I think he's a member of the board, so he should hear all the comments.
If he has to leave for any reason, you can go ahead. If you don't want to speak, you don't have to speak.
I'll speak. Thank you. Jessica Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. Over the past few months, I have spoken to hundreds of people, to parents, to concerned taxpayers, to small business owners, and many more. Many of these people will not attend these meetings or speak out due to fear of retribution. So I share with you the words from a concerned parent and resident, and I quote, "Isn't it the belief of this board and your new DEI department that all voices and perspectives matter and will be protected and supported by Methacton School District? Your definition of the new DEI department states the following: Diversity: The broad set of visible and invisible dimensions encompassing all the ways in which people, processes, and perspectives differ within Methacton. So the board should recognize the diverse opinions and beliefs of members of its community and respect them by allowing them to make personal health choices for their children. Equity: The result of ensuring each individual has what they need to succeed. Equity includes identifying and removing personal and system barriers that limit the full participation of all individuals and groups. So the board should recognize the social and psychological and physical impact wearing masks has on our kids and be removing the barriers, also known as masks, that are hindering our children. Inclusion: The active process of welcoming, respecting, supporting, connecting, and valuing individuals while acknowledging the uniqueness or identity of the entire Methacton community. So the board should welcome, respect, and support personal choice, and if you don't, then aren't these mask mandates removing that freedom, respect, and recognition of individual uniqueness and identity?" End quote. The author asked me not to share her name. Why are people afraid to come and speak at these board meetings? Perhaps it's the message coming from the nine board members that support DEI, but also applaud denying freedom of speech, attacking people because they have varying views, doxing, intimidating, and canceling. How do I know this? Because as a board candidate, I was invited to join a Facebook group, invited to join the group, and within moments, Madam President alerted them to my presence. What did I see when I got into the group? I was called a bigot, a racist, and the daughter of the Confederates. My eight-year-old daughter and I walked around knocking on doors for the campaign, and I was followed by a man in his car who circled the block five or six times. I had my eight-year-old with me. My home and my family are being photographed from cars with tinted windows. I have been cursed at by more than one of you. This is not the behavior that drives inclusivity. Okay? I call on each one of you, eight board members this evening, to speak up tonight and condemn this vile, mud-slinging, immature behavior. It is more important than ever that we come together as a community, a diverse community, with varying points of view. We should be acting with dignity and respect. This fear of retribution is real, substantiated by a tweet from a Lower Suster supervisor that said, quote, "I don't want healing, I want retribution," end quote. As Ernestine Rose said, "Silence is consent." President Aubrey Larsones, members of this board, do you disavow this hypocritical tactic to bully and silence the people of this community that have diverse backgrounds with different points of view from you and your political allies? Thank you.
Well, that's a tough act to follow. Marissa Walker, Lower Providence. I will not have that difficult of questions for you, but none of my questions except the QR code were answered. What about social events, homecoming, football games, basketball games? Can someone tell the parents and the kids that these rite of passages will come back in their lives this year? We are saying that they have to be three feet apart. So when does it end? Can they go to a dance? Can they sit with their friends at a game? No one's answering those questions, and these kids deserve answers. They have suffered enough. They have suffered enough. Another thing that I'm curious about is the end date, which many people talked about, and I think we covered that. But the public deserves to be kept in the loop, and you deserve...you owe it to them to be transparent and to keep them updated on this information. The other thing that I brought up that was not addressed, are you opening the window for parents to now disenroll their children from the district or put them in Methacton online? Many parents, as we heard tonight, don't want their children in masks. So now, do they have the opportunity to change their selection? You owe it to them to make that choice. Please, give these kids the rite of passages back. Let them know what they can expect from this school year. I want to see kids enjoying games again. Are we going to make them sit six feet apart from one another? This isn't right. If we're masking them, then give them the freedom to make these decisions, to attend these type of events. Thank you.
Kelly Arno in Lower Providence. Just real quickly, I wanted to say thank you for making a difficult decision tonight that's going to keep our kids safe and in school, hopefully. One thing I did want to just bring up was, last year when we started virtual, and then we had the teachers teaching both virtual and in-person at the same time, I had kind of asked for the district to provide some more support to those teachers. Now I'm asking for the same thing. I was a science teacher, and my area of study allowed me to take my children outside on a frequent basis. That would be really helpful this year. But with the amount of smart board use, dependence on technology, especially coming out of the pandemic, the teachers are going to need some support with that, and I think it would be very appropriate for the district to reach out and ask the teachers, what can we do to help you? Especially at a school like Arrowhead, where the outdoor space is extremely limited with the construction, try and figure out some way, and I know it's an impossible task, but some way that each teacher could get their children outside to get a mask break at some point during the day. Last year, it wasn't very feasible with the teachers teaching both in-person and virtually at the same time, but this year, the situation is a little different. So that's all. Thank you.
Amy Sorrell, Lower Providence. I'll go back to my original question now that you guys had done your vote. Exactly what law or statute gives the school board authority to mandate masks? You said that, Ms. President, you said that, I don't remember exactly, but somebody proved something, but you didn't really list anything specifically. I would like to know the law or the statute that gives you that authority. That's all.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Can't tell if you're making your way to the microphone or if you're getting ready to leave. You're coming up? Okay.
I'd like to say thank you to the board for making a hard decision, and I thank you for everybody's different viewpoints on it. I do agree that we do need to have conversations about this and encourage everyone's opinion. I do feel personally, I did, by listening to others tonight, I did understand or I listened to other people's opinions, which I'm glad I had the opportunity to do here. Thank you. I would also like the board to consider, as we all are, having a break with the masks. Our goal is to keep the children in school in person five days a week. This is what the healthcare professionals are recommending. They are recommending that we do universal masking so they can stay in school five days a week in person. So with that being said, I ask the school board also, and the school district, to try and find creative ways where the children do have the opportunity to have masks break as we do as adults. Take them outside as much as possible. In the curriculum, allow for extra breaks in between classes for them to go outside and have a break. Have art class outside if that's possible. Promote gym outside as the weather still stays the same, or good weather at this point. Science class outside, English class outside, I'm not sure. I'm not a teacher, but if I could ask the school district to start thinking of those creative plans for them. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you before you spoke. It's Diane Greeley, correct?
Diane Greeley, Lower Providence.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
All right, I did want to respond to a couple of things. Hearing that there's members of the community that feel a fear of retribution for speaking, I'm not sure if people realize this, there is a form on our website that you can use to contact the board. It can be done anonymously. Everyone has access to that. So if anyone has something that they'd like to share with us, that they don't feel comfortable having their name attached to it, by all means, it's there. The statement that was read that was something that apparently someone didn't feel comfortable sharing with us was actually already emailed to us a couple of days ago. So I'm not sure who was uncomfortable sharing it, but we do already have that email. The statements that were apparently cited earlier were not statements that I made, just to clarify. I know the screenshots are already out there because people have been sharing them. You can see for yourself. Social events, we'll be figuring this out on a case-by-case basis as we go. Outdoor events, for right now, we're not requiring masks. As we get into the school year, as more information is available, as we know our positivity rates, we will be making those decisions. Obviously, we all prioritize our kids having a normal school experience. We want them to be able to have football games and homecoming and all of those wonderful things. If it becomes a situation where it's not feasible to do them the way that we've done them in the past, we will do what we have done in the past 18 months over and over again. Our educators have been unbelievably creative and collaborative and have found new ways of doing things, and I trust that they will continue to do that if it becomes untenable for us to do things the way we've always done them. I've seen a lot of change and a lot of growth and a lot of evolution over the last 18 months in how we do things. This isn't how any of us wanted to learn how to do things differently, but here we are, and we're making the best of it. As far as parents being able to change their choice, I think that any parents who are looking at this mask mandate and saying they don't want their children in person, I would encourage you to reach out to your building principal. Obviously, you can disenroll your student at any time. It's a public school. You are not required to be here. You can choose an alternate educational environment for your child. But if you have a concern, reach out to your building principal. They're the best ones to address that. And as far as what law gives us the authority to mandate masks, I will reach out to our solicitor and find out. I'm not a lawyer, but I have a statement from our lawyer, who we pay good money to advise us, and he said, "This isn't our authority." And it is part of the school code. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi.
With that, is there anyone else from the board that has any comments before we adjourn? Ms. Hall?
I just wanted to address the question regarding the outside activities and what would be occurring. On page 11 of the attachment to tonight, on the MSD-approved health...the proposed MSD-approved health and safety plan, on page 11, there's mitigation protocol, and there's also contest screening and gathering limitations that are listed that I would recommend people read that section. And just from my time on policy, I just wanted to point that the, I think the part of the public school code that was referenced was 24 PS5-510. So if people wanted to look that up. That was all.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Kankar?
The only thing I wanted to just address is Chair of Education. I think it's important for us to definitely discuss, like Ms. Rocco said, about public speaking in classes. I think that we need to review and discuss that and make sure that we provide shields, whatever it is that's necessary, because I think it's crucial for us to have that. I do think that we should have a discussion, if you and Dr. Zerbi can have a discussion about the Methacton virtual. As we know, when we move to charter schools, the tax liability becomes more for us. So just have a discussion with Dr. Zerbi to just review if we are able to open up the online option again. I just want to put that out there. And I do think outside as much as possible, but putting it in the curriculum, that there's a rotation of classes if all grade levels go outside. So if we can even look in property, Mr. Navarrette, about tents, Dr. Zerbi, on large tents that are semi-permanent, that allow us to have multiple areas in the grass, to do this, and to have setup of just the, you know, the folding chairs and tables set up there and wiped down, and to provide an outdoor education space that's semi-permanent for all K through high school, because I agree, they don't have recess from Skyview to high school. So I think it's important for all of our committees to review all opportunities for these students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kankar. That's exactly the kind of ingenuity and creativity that I feel like we definitely need. So thank you for bringing that up.
All right, anyone else? I will take a motion to adjourn then.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.